Okay, Board members, we're going to pick up now on 4.08 on the E-Rate final bids, connectivity, and Dr. Probst is already at the podium. Dr. Probst?
Thank you. Five years ago, Cabarrus County Schools signed a five-year contract with Time Warner Cable for connectivity. The cost of that was $52,475 a month. This past November, we went back out for bids because the contract is over this June. We received three bids. One vendor was at $47,120 a month, one at $58,000 a month, and the other at $153,000 a month. We decided, using our E-Rate rubric, to go with the lowest bidder, and that is Time Warner Cable. I have the contract here for you, and based on Policy 6420, because this contract exceeds $250,000 a year, we do need to have Board Chair signature on it. We are pleased that the bid is not a five-year. In this time and day, five years would be too long. We thought about going with a one-year, but the cost would be approximately $100,000 more a year. We are very comfortable with Time Warner Cable as a vendor, very happy with the services, and since they were the low bid, we would like to continue and this time have a three-year bid. Our bill will be approximately $65,000 less next year than it was this year.
Okay, Board members, start with Ms. Monnet. Do you have questions, reference to the E-Rate bid? No questions? Mr. Kiger?
I'm going to ask something I should have asked a long time ago, and give me a 20-second just blurb on E-Rate and background, and exactly just define it for me.
Basically, the federal government comes back in and gives a reimbursement for connectivity. Federal Communications comes in. It's based on your Title I, and we're about 40% Title I, which puts us at what's a 60% reimbursable. Kannapolis is a much poorer school. They get 80% back on those fees. So while it's a $600,000 contract, out-of-pocket for Cabarrus County will be closer to $150,000. We are very glad to have E-Rate.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Kiger. Ms. Blackwelder?
The only question I have is, those are just so different. Are we sure there's nothing we're missing there?
I was so hoping you would ask the question. The reason there's a difference with the third vendor at $153,000, you have to remember that Time Warner Cable, the original vendor, put in all the fiber. So a new vendor would have to go into each site and put in the fiber. That's why it would be so expensive for a new vendor. The one that is very close, the second vendor, which is that, the vendor admitted that they would be losing money for the first couple of years, but it was worth them to lose money to get the contract.
Ms. Blackwelder, thank you very much. Ms. Furtenbaum?
Okay, I'll talk to you later, but I don't think you have to replace the fiber, to replace the connections.
But they'd have to put in fiber inside the school. There's certain, based on the second vendor, that's what they wanted to put in.
Okay, that doesn't make any sense why they replaced fiber. But I do have a question, and really in seeing the Cabarrus County Government Complex is under our contract.
Correct.
And they have a much higher speed.
Correct.
There's something between 100 meg, 1 gig connection, and 4 gig, 10 gig. Can we improve the Ed Center, Early College, PLC, and the high schools? Can we go somewhere up a little bit on those incrementally to give them more speed?
Back in October, we had a study by MCNC, and they came in and analyzed every single site that we had. Their recommendation at the time, several months ago, was to move from 100 meg to a 1 gig at those sites. We certainly, once we move up to a 1 gig, if we decide that, say the following year, based on usage, we need to move to a 2 gig, certainly we can negotiate to do that at those sites. They recommended at the aggregate down at the county to go with a 4 gig with a burst to a 10. For example, Mooresville, all the students have computers and they have online textbooks. Every, the curriculum is taught through the Internet with their materials. They're already at a 6 gig. So we felt very pleased to be moving from a 100 to a 1 gig at the school sites. Certainly, if we wanted to increase it in the next year or two, we could.
But that burst isn't guaranteed, and that's what I worry about, because the more we do bring-your-own, which I think you're experimenting with, the more you do virtualization, and the more downloads you have, just the whole SmartBoard concept, everything that's happening in schools, and I think over three years, I would almost rather see, in particular, we've already heard Early College was having some slowness there. So all of our schools that are heavy tech and higher number of students, can we get a quote now before we approve this?
I would like to stand, the Early College was extremely slow when we were on RCC's network. That is no longer the case because we put in our own with Time Warner Cable, I want to say, last October.
And they don't have a quantity of students, but can, I mean, I'd really like to see the high schools and the Ed Center go up, and maybe the, well, the Opportunity School doesn't have as many as quantity either, but I'd almost rather see those go up, Mr. Chair, now than coming back to us, because it's an incremental difference. It's not going to be huge.
It's not. If you said that you want to see the high schools go to a 2 gig, I don't think that the price is going to be that much. It's maybe a couple thousand dollars a month. My concern is, when we put these quotes in here, we worked very closely with Barry Pace, DPI, and the E-Rate folks. For example, they didn't want to see us go from a 1 gig to a 10 gig. They said that'll be a red flag with E-Rate, and if you get red flagged, you're going to lose your 60% reimbursement for a period of three years.
Yeah, and I agree, but I think, I think based on technology, and instead of repeating what we have now, like I said, I'd really like to know, and Mark, can we do this, because this is a bid, can we ask them now, before we approve this, or approve it as a rider kind of thing, that we go to a 2 or even a 4 on high schools and the Education Center?
May I ask Ms. Furtenbaum, we're currently at a 100, so we're going 10 times stronger, and this was the recommendation based on MCNC, so...
I know, but MCNC doesn't know we're looking at a three-year contract. Do we have that advice written?
Actually, they were part of this whole process in our selection, and whether or not to go with a 3 gig. So I guess my question is, you know, I want to go back to MCNC, and I want to talk to the E-Rate people and say, they have no problem at the county with the aggregate with the 4 gig, going from a 1 gig to a 4 gig, but at a school site, when you're at 100 meg and you might go to a 2 gig, I want to make sure that we wouldn't be not getting E-Rate funds.
Ms. Probst, let me ask you just a question, question before we move on, and we're looking at 100 meg up to 1 gig. What were we at before this? What was our previous contract?
We are currently at 100 meg, and we're...
How is that performing for us?
Absolutely fine at this point.
And so we're saying, we're going up to 10 times that with all of these schools?
Correct. In July 1, at the school sites, we'll go to a 1 gig. That is current, that's the current recommendation from MCNC to the schools, that you need to be at a 1 gig. They're very concerned about the testing, and so that is what the recommendation is. I certainly understand what Ms. Furtenbaum was saying, that, you know, the more you put the devices in the child, and we're going with the bring-your-own to the schools, are we going to be able to pull it with the 1 gig? When we met with Time Warner Cable, since they've won the bid, you certainly, within that three-year period, can certainly increase and just pay more. But whatever the board requests, I'll be glad to do.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, I would like the information. This is a burst. This is not a guaranteed 1 gig. It's just like when you buy it at home. You get this big range, but there's websites. One of them is called Speedtest.com. You can go out and do your own speed test. If you can get 60% of the advertised rate with doing multiple tests from your home computer, you're lucky. You will never hit the top of the range. It's just the way that market is designed with their advertising and how they quote things. So we're not going to get 1 gig. That's never guaranteed. When you have high school classes, you've got four computer labs at Coxmo High School going at it together, and they're creating videos and downloading and uploading and everything. I just think when we look at a three-year contract, I guess I would like, and if you can just contact, if you want to contact MCNC, tell them, this is what we have in the contract. It's a three-year contract. I'd rather see us allocate it now, especially with all the new initiatives going on within technology, to be more efficient with the servers and the bring-your-in devices and all those things. I'd rather see us get a quote on the increase now than mid-year. It's kind of like doing an add-on after you buy a car. You'd rather have the sunroof cut in with the manufacturer than you would have it cut in afterwards. It's going to cost you more.
Okay, my question for you, let me, did you want a 2 gig at the high schools? Is that what you were recommending?
Just, I'm not recommending, because I haven't analyzed the data. I'm just saying, I would like MCNC, knowing that this is a three-year contract, would they recommend, for the size of our high schools, the different virtualization initiatives, the increase in virtual learning, and the bring-your-own devices, with all of those changes coming up in months, not in years, in months, do they, would they recommend at this time that we should increase to the 2 gig for the high schools and probably the Ed Center? So because you do training here, too. So that's, I just want to know what that recommendation is, then kind of assuming it's flat, because to me, having a 1 gig at a 350 elementary school is very different than having a 1 gig at a 1500 high school, and we're treating them the same.
Okay.
Okay, Ms. Furtenbaum, thank you. Mr. Fur?
Excuse me. You know, as usual, Ms. Furtenbaum stole my thunder on technology, but I'm going to let her slide this time. We talk about them, I hate to try to be funny, but, you know, we start talking about these gigs. I live in Midland, and we frog gig. So I don't really know what she's talking about, but we'll just leave it at that.
Thank you, Mr. Fur, for your humor. It never fails, let us down. Okay, Mr. Kiger?
How do you follow that? I wanted to, did we get an answer to the, Mark's, the question that Ms. Furtenbaum posed to our attorney?
No, you didn't. I guess, and my question actually goes back to Kelly. On the, on the RFP form, the Form 470 that we submitted, was that submitted at the 100 meg burst to 1 gig that we got the pricing back on? I don't know how those, the RFP, how specific it is on...
It has to be very specific, and we wrote the RFP based on the recommendations from MCNC, and it was moving from a 100 meg to a 1 gig, and then it was a 4, we actually did two things on the 4 gig. We did a 4 gig with a burst, and then we did a 4 gig and a 10 gig.
So if it was written that way to change it, is that a total rebid, or is it an addendum to the...
That would be my concern. I do, I don't think we can go back. If we're going to now say what we want is not the 100 meg with the burst to 1 gig, but something else at these schools, I do think you would need a rebid.
Well, I mean, I guess just on the surface of it, I can't say that I disagree with Ms. Furtenbaum, that a high school is going to be very different than an elementary school, and, you know, I mean, I hear what you're saying about the recommendations that you got, but that may be information that's worth, you know, I don't know what the number difference would be, but it would probably be worth knowing.
Actually, once the bid is awarded, if you want to increase the usage, you certainly can do that. I will say that you can't just look at the size of the high schools. Some of our elementary schools have just as many endpoint devices and end-users as some of the high schools.
We have, we have tiers of sizes of schools. I'm talking, we're treating equally, the 350-student school with the 1500-student school. That was my example. And we have multiple in that 500 or under, so we're treating them exactly the same. We didn't tier this.
On that, you're correct.
Yeah.
Well, you know, that might be something that could be looked into. Obviously, it has merit. The only thing is, is the time constraints that we're dealing with, because I believe our current contract expires, what, June 30th, I believe it is?
That's correct.
And so we're looking at, you know, a pretty tight squeeze on the constraints there. I could see where Ms. Furtenbaum's concerns are, but, but then again, though, when I look at what you've presented, Ms. Probst, and what we have here in front of us, if we're going from 100 meg to 1 gigabyte, that's a 10 times increase, but even if we only got at the maximum 500 meg, that's still five times what we got now. And so, you know, as far as I'm concerned, and, you know, technology is not one of my pet peeves, by no means, but when you go from 100 meg to potentially 1 gigabyte and end up with 500, you still went five times. And so, with that being said, I don't see a problem with what we have myself, and I wouldn't want to change anything, as far as I'm concerned. But now, it's the board's pleasure, and Ms. Blackwelder, I think she wanted to make an additional comment, and she stepped out for a minute, but it's whatever the board's pleasure is. I wanted to give Ms. Blackwelder time to speak, but I'm not going to wait. So are there any other comments you have?
Well, I just, Mark, could you tell me that, for some reason, I'm still unclear on whether we actually have to go back to the screen.
I think you have two options. I mean, I think you can accept this bid and then ask for some alternative pricing to increase the capacity at certain schools. That's one option. The other option is to say, actually, we want to change what we bid out. We don't think that we've got enough capacity at some of these schools, and therefore ask that it be, that a new Form 470 be filed with new requirements and get input from the other bidders. I think you could do either one. In other, you can accept, you've got a low bidder recommended based on the bid that was put together back in November when we submitted the form, and you can simply accept that and then say, you'd like some pricing on revisions. The contract provides for changes, so you're not locked in at that. But I think Ms. Furtenbaum's point was, they may, once they have the bid, you know, whether they want to do it, although they still have some incentive to give you a good deal. If it's too expensive, you'll just stick with what you have. So you could get pricing. I think those are your two options. You could either say, we're concerned about the capacity levels, and it should be rebid. I don't know the timing. I guess I do have some logistic concern if the contract's going to expire at the end of June, the timing to try to redo the form may be problematic to do that, give direction to do that now, and get something put out and back and action by the board by the end of June, maybe.
The filing window does not reopen. It only opens once a year, and it will not reopen until mid-November. So to go back out for competitive bidding, we cannot do that until next November. Again, these numbers were based on the recommendations from DPI and MCNC, and with Barry Pace, with the E-Rate, looking at it and going, you can't ask for too much too quickly, because you might lose your funding with E-Rate.
Thank you, Dr. Probst. Okay, Board members, you heard from our attorney what our options are. It looks like Option 2 is out because of the time constraint, so that leaves us with really only one option, and that is to add this to the consent agenda with request from Dr. Probst to get us information about potentially adding on additional space at some time in the future, what those costs would be. Is that what everybody's wanting us to do?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, and I would like that information before next Monday. I would like to know the expense of the add-on, so we could approve the contract, and then if we would get a favorable price for enhancements, and we do that, Mark, anytime we bid other work, oftentimes after we award the initial contract, we say, yes, we want an enhancement to something, whether it be facilities or whatever, and we stick with that same provider.
Right, I think that's something you can do. You can definitely negotiate after you award the bid. So the question is, are you, you know, but I do think you need to award it. The other option would be to say, we're not awarding it, we're going to change it. But it sounds like with the timing, that's, I agree. It doesn't sound like that's really an option.
Okay, thank you, Mark. All right, so you're clear on what we're going to be doing then. We'll, I guess we'll be going to the consent agenda with these items, and also...
Mr. Chair, I would like it on action.
You do want to...
Because I want, I want the follow-up information.
Okay, all right, that's fine. We can have that on the action agenda. Does Ms. Monroe have that? Yeah, she's in, she's focused. Boy, I don't want to interrupt Ms. Monroe. All right, so that's what we'll do then. We'll go to the action agenda, and you get this information back to us. And I think, Ms. Furtenbaum, was you wanting that site specific on the increases, or did you want it in general?
No, just in general, because I guess I would like to see that MCNC thinks we should treat, if they could issue almost like a, an opinion, if you will, on, I don't understand why it wasn't tiered. I thought if we're increasing, it would be, I just expected a different response, because we talk about that all the time with e-learning, about tiering, and that there should be consideration given to, and any business makes that decision. How much, and if you think, even for your construction folks, the HVAC and the power in the building, how much do you need based on what you're doing in that building? And this didn't seem to account for that, so...
Okay, we're good to go on that then. Thank you, Dr. Probst. Okay, now, we're going to move on, Board members, to, let me get out of here. These, we're going to go to 4.09, and the Northwest Cabarrus High School and the Concord High School Digital Control Project bid, and we've got Mr. Connolly back with us again. Thank you for being here again.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This is some good news. We opened bids for Northwest Cabarrus High School and Concord High School new digital controls projects on May 2. And I'm happy to let you know, let's see, what do I have up here now? I can't even... Okay, this is the Concord High School bid that's up right now. Concord High School was bid out with alternative for increased warranty, five-year increase warranty, which is, makes it effectively a 10-year warranty, at $293,285.57. This figure is $179,285.43 below what was budgeted, so we've got that extra. The second bid, and that was, that was actually Siemens Industry. We had three bidders, Siemens Train and Schneider Electric, and Siemens was a low bid. The second project, do we want to do these individually? Okay. Are there any questions on that bid?
Ms. Blackwelder, you go ahead. If you have a question on this, yeah, yeah.
Okay. I guess my question is, if they're not going to offer the train controls, I know we sync a lot of hours with that motherboard, or whatever it's called, with the train. If that's not applicable, is it a separate RAN system? I'm a little confused on how this is worded here.
Well, it's interesting, because Siemens is, actually, their, their controls, they sync up with train equipment, and in the schools right now, we have Siemens. And that's, that's one of the reasons I think that the bid was as low as it is, because it's compatible with their system. And in both schools, actually, Siemens is being used, and we use Siemens for maintenance as well, and we hire them out to do, to maintain a lot of the, a lot of the control systems, and they're really a good contractor.
So the not applicable didn't mean that they weren't going to be doing it, it's just that they, they already have the ability to do that, correct?
That's correct. And not applicable means that, since they don't provide train, they can't, you know, they wouldn't, that wouldn't be their preferred alternative. They provide Siemens manufactured equipment. That's correct.
And that's Siemens control units only, not, not the units themselves. I mean, what I mean is, the HVAC unit themselves, they're...
It's just the controls.
Whereas like, so that, and that's what we're bidding, just the controls?
Just the controls. It's, it's not the equipment, like the chillers. It's just the, like the thermostat controls. They're all digital, that type of thing.
And it does correlate with the train equipment that we already have?
That's correct.
All right, absolutely. So before we move on to the other one here, Board members, do you have any questions on this? Ms. Furtenbaum?
Just in general, this would seem to help us with our energy savings as well, right?
Absolutely.
Because we're going to control better?
Yes, yes, it will.
Spaces. With Concord and Northwest Cabarrus both being such old buildings, they typically have heat and cooling fluctuation issues. How will this help? If, will that help at all?
Well, we have new chillers that were installed separately. Those, those have already been installed, which are going to be more efficient. Now, in terms of the controls themselves, another thing that this will allow us to do, at least at the facilities level, is it'll give us RF control where we can actually tie into, to the system remotely, so we can respond a lot quicker to fluctuations and changes. We can actually monitor it from the building over here with a laptop and make changes remotely, which is huge. So that allows us to respond a lot quicker to fluctuations and changes in outside air temperatures, which affect, obviously, the inside air temperatures as well, which, you know, from an efficiency standpoint, it's going to be a lot better. Okay. Can you help me here? I'm sorry. The second project is Northwest Cabarrus High School Chiller, and we had three bidders, again, the same three bidders, Schneider Electric, Train, and Siemens. Siemens, again, was the low bidder on this project, and they were at, yeah, this is, you know, I read the other one wrong, didn't I? I believe I did. I stated the first one at 2, at Northwest Cabarrus, no, that was right. Northwest Cabarrus was 260, 035.55. That's $92,315.45 below budget. So the total aggregate with the two projects is $271,600 under budget. It's a good amount of money.
Absolutely, Lee. And this was the money I was talking about earlier with Ms. Klutz, you know, for about the QSCB projects, how we could move that money around, but that will all have to be handled at a later time, whenever all the other things come in. So, Board members, do you have any further questions on this?
Are we planning to take the extra warranty, the extra five years?
Yes, on both projects. Those, that, those totals included the extra warranty. And what's interesting is, on both of these projects, the warranties were almost, they were half what the other bidders had as well. So the, Siemens was really motivated, I think, to work with us on this, and they put a real low number together, so...
Well, we were real motivated to work with them when they can save us this kind of money.
They're good contractors.
Just out of curiosity, how many firms were invited to bid?
We, well, we advertised this, and...
Oh, right, right.
Yeah, so we advertised it, but, but these, these groups were contacted, you know, to let them know that the advertise was, that it was advertised, but there's only a few big firms that provide controls. These are the bigs, the bigs, right here. I think the only other one is Johnson Controls.
Yeah, that's the one I was, that's just curious to me was missing. I just didn't know if they had, knew about it and declined, or, but I would assume you don't know.
Well, they weren't, they weren't in the, the specification specified these three.
Okay, Mr. Connolly, it looks like you've done an excellent job here on this one as well. Board members, do we have a nod of the head for consent agenda for the 14th? Okay, Mr. Connolly.
Great, thank you.
14th consent agenda. All right, we're going to move to 4.10, the Educon Proposal. I'd like to ask Mr. Enriquez and Mr. Cliff Moyer to the podium, and they're going to make this presentation to us on Educon.
If you want, and while Cliff's coming up, I'll be happy to start. You may recall a few years ago, when we were looking at energy savings, we decided to do an RFP process where we got bids. We had looked at those bids and didn't really get any bids that we were happy with. I know there's been some continuing communications with the folks at Educon who serve some of our neighboring districts about other alternatives, and one proposal was to just do a simple consulting contract. It's not a guaranteed energy savings contract. I know the expectation is that we will save energy. By doing a regular consulting contract, we're not bound by the same bidding requirements that we would be in the RFP process. So I think that's what this proposal is, to simply hire them for three years at the stated rate. I know the anticipation is they'll save us more than what we're spending, and Cliff can address the merits, but legally, I've reviewed it, and I'm comfortable with the form of the contract and the fact, and not needing to go out in another RFP process.
Good afternoon. I was briefed by Lynn Friday about this, and so I don't know a whole lot. You've probably taken over most of what I was going to say or pass on to you. Lynn asked me to request an Energy Conservation Service contract with the Winston-Salem-based company, Educon, and as you probably already know, Educon is a company that assists, assists schools with their energy management plan. And in a brief email, Lynn sent to me a letter that came from the president of Educon, and that's what's on my screen now, and briefly, it's just an overview of their services. their services, uh, that they plan to offer us. And, and if you, you may have already had this and read this, but, uh, is there any questions on this part of the EduCon proposal?
Okay, board members, uh, you've had this. We've talked about it. We've kicked it around here for a couple of months now, off and on. And, uh, you notice, I think one of the concerns was, was about the payment, how we would pay EduCon. And you'll notice in the letter from, um, the president of their company, says EduCon will not invoice Cabarrus County Schools until our service has accrued enough savings to pay our service fee. Uh, the question that I had, Mark, you may answer this, or Cliff one, uh, and I don't remember what the contract said. I did read it at one point, but it's been a couple of months ago. Do we pay them that $155,000 a year? Is that prorated monthly? And then the service fee, uh, is, the service fee is 1/12 of the 155. And so based on what they're saying here, uh, until they've saved us excess of whatever it is, say 13, 14,000 a month, until they've saved us at least that much per month, they'll not bill us. Is that correct?
Uh, two, two comments on that. You're right. Uh, the 4.0 is a section on fees, and it is, it's 12 equal monthly installments of $12,925 to get you to the 155. And it does, there's a definition of what energy savings or cost avoidance is. And basically, they're trying to look at, uh, relevant accounting energy periods to see what we did in a prior month and, uh, and compare it. Um, so I, I know, you know, I guess an area that is, is not crystal clear to me is how you deal with things like the new chillers and stuff where you're going to have those efficiencies. Um, I will also tell you that I don't think their cover letter is a legally binding part of the contract, which means they're, they're saying that they don't anticipate billing us until there's those savings. But legally, I think we're, we're saying we'll pay them that amount. Um, I know in talking to Lynn, he's comfortable in talking to some neighboring systems, he, that we will, that they've saved more than that amount. And obviously, if they don't end up saving that, we have termination rights under the contract. We could say we're going to terminate if we're not realizing those savings. But, uh, so, they've said they won't bill in the cover letter, uh, but legally, they could bill anyway. Um, and, you know, they've got a pretty, as I understand it, sophisticated tracking programs to look at what energy usage was and how it changes and implement some behavior modifications programs is how they recognize that. And I think that software package is part of what they do to come in and do the training and tracking. And I, I haven't seen all that in action. That's just, uh, that's my understanding of how they would present to you, these are the savings that we think you've accumulated. And obviously, we'll be able to compare what we were paying in absolute dollars to prior years. But the challenge is, you know, some years are warmer, some years are cooler. This year was a warmer year, so we're not using as, you know, we haven't used, this winter, we didn't use the fuel costs we used last time. And that's not necessarily due to energy savings. It's weather-related or buildings that we fix up get more efficient. So it's a multi-variable equation when you're looking at what's impacting that, and those energy dollars.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Enriquez. Mr. Meyer, you have anything else you want to add?
No, the only other thing I had was the other document, if you'd like to look at the contract. Um, I think Mark's already commented on that. This was the modified contract for energy savings consulting service contract. And that's all I had.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Meyer. Board members, do you have any questions that you'd like to address to, uh, to our attorney or to Mr. Meyer reference this? I did, well, I did want to tell you that if you all remember, uh, later on, later on last week, after board docs had been posted, I sent a letter to all of the board members asking questions, concerns they sent. I didn't hear from anybody except for Ms. Carpenter. And I have to, even though she's not here, that means she can't vote. But I felt inclined, though, to give you, um, you know, her feelings on this. And I asked her to respond back, and I haven't heard from her, but I asked her what was her, what was her reason for not wanting EduCon to be our energy, you know, for this. And, um, I said, is it contracts? Because she don't like contracts, as all of you know. But I never did hear back from her, but I, she was opposed to this. And so I, I felt like I needed to tell the board members that. But I never got her reasoning why. So at this point, though, we need to make a decision whether we're going to move this on. And by the way, Ms. Carpenter won't be here next week either. So, uh, for our 14th meeting. But, um, what's the board's pleasure? Do we need to move on to the consent agenda for this? Or do you want to put it on the action agenda for other information or whatever?
Mr., um, yeah, I, I have a couple of questions. One here, Mark, you just mentioned about software, but on item 2.5, I'm wearing a PD up here, so I'm not sure, page, on page two, 2.5, it says purchase or lease at the board's expense and energy accounting software recommended by EduCon at a cost of, it says not applicable. And to me, not applicable means this clause does not apply. It would say zero, if it's a zero cost to the board. So do they provide the software? Or do we have to buy something? Or are they not using it for us? I don't know what that means.
I think I can answer that. Uh, we talked with them earlier, and they said they would be happy to use our software, which is the school dude software that we're currently using today.
Okay, can we have this contract state that? Because this statement to me is confusing. So can we have that, that modified?
We can, we can certainly do that. I think we could really take 2.5 out.
Yeah, maybe that's the case. I just thought it either says zero, or it, it says we're substituting. I, you know, I wasn't sure how to read that.
No, I think we can, I think in, in light of that, and I do remember some discussion about they would just use what we currently have, we'll remove 2.5 from the contract.
Okay. Um, and then, Mark, to your point, and this has been my, my concern with these, these kinds of agreements all along is, what is the baseline starting point? If we are already counting, and we are counting some amount of savings in our budget, with or without this contract, we're saying because of the new windows at Central Cabarrus High School, other new things we've done, chillers, et cetera, how do we count a baseline to say that was our savings versus that's EduCon savings? And I don't know that we, we can quantify that. And it, it concerns me that we have so much money in flux right now, um, with these improvements, that we're not going to have a, a good baseline for another year.
Let me, let me add, Ms. Furtenbaugh, to, I spoke with, uh, another district's energy manager just over the weekend, just over the weekend. He seen me at church, came back and talked to me. And this guy, uh, he actually introduced me to this a couple of years ago when I first talked to Dr. Shepherd about it a couple of years ago. You remember, we had lunch and we talked about it. And I, I, uh, asked him the very same question. I'm saying, you know, we're expecting a 10, 15, 20% decrease in our energy consumption. Well, obviously, as, uh, Mr. Enrique and I talked today, we can't expect a 10 or 15% reduction every year because at the end of the, at the end of the time, they're going to end up owing us. So, so obviously, that can't work. Now, what this gentleman told me was, and, and he's, they've been in this program with EduCon for, this is the 11th year. They said for the first three years, they would average anywhere from 15 to 20% for the first three years. And here it is, and they're out of the contract now. They're totally out of the contract with EduCon. And he said that they're still averaging, even with all the new schools they've built, all the new things that's come online and all of that, they're still averaging about a 7% decrease. The baseline was when they started, 2001.
The only other thought I had is my understanding is they do track it by school. In other words, it's a, by facility, as opposed to just one big number. So you could certainly look at those facilities and look at energy savings for the ones you haven't made changes on to see if you're seeing changes there. I, I'm not as clear how they control for the weather, although I think there are ways to control for weather and other things. So you're right, it may be very difficult in it where you've got a new chiller, how much is behavior modification versus the new chiller. But for facilities you haven't changed, I expect you could probably track and look and say, we've seen a 10% decrease at this school where we haven't changed anything. And that would be a way for you to assess whether the project, whether the programs are in fact having a desired effect.
And I guess I'm wondering if we're using our software, we're not using some brand-new, do we just need better training on our software for whatever these features are, as opposed to having someone come in? I mean, what are they bringing materially if we're not using their software? We already have an energy manager, and that clause in here maybe should be modified too. It says that it'll be a mutually agreed salary between them and us for our energy manager, and we already have an energy manager. So that needs to be modified? Which just needs to be modified because it's not an implication we're hiring someone else. It's just, it's, that's already done. Um, so, so I'm concerned about what, what are they materially providing that's going to be this mystery solution?
Well, that would be their trade secret, Cindy. I'm going to tell you that.
But if they're using our software, I guess I'm wondering if, do we need more of a one-year consulting contract with an energy manager, person, or firm as opposed to a three-year contract? Because we have all the tools already. We just need to know how to use them better.
May I answer that? I just want to give you my personal opinion on it, since we, with the construction subcommittee worked with this just a little bit. Um, the only reason we're using our software is because it's there and they can work with it. And it's not anything that's got a, um, component in it of what you're doing. It's how you keep up with it. And that's what Cliff does a lot, is tracking what's going on at those individual schools. And the issue is, to me, we all know, I went back and pulled three years ago what these numbers looked like, and they were higher. The other firms were higher. So I'm not so sure if we did a one-year with somebody else, the numbers would look any different, or we would get any other kind of agreement with them, any different than what EduCon would look like. And they are proven evidently with the information that we have gotten within those other systems. And we'd have to kind of start that process all over again, and we'd just end up where we're at now, which is what we looked at. So my thought is, we're getting a really good deal. We are where we are. The only way we're going to know if we're going to get anywhere else is to try this. And that's my personal opinion.
Well, and that's exactly what I want to do. I want to try it. I don't want to commit $465,000 to it. That's what it is.
Right. But, um, I don't know that we would get a one-year contract with anybody else because it takes that three-year period of time to get, get your baseline, go where you're, you know, know where you're going. I'd be like trying to have a savings account and only open it up for two months. You know, you have to have a year or a couple of years to decide how you're going to save. So you've got to have a track record, and three years, to me, would be applicable. You couldn't say in a year from now, that it would take a year to track it, the first year, the second year would be what you did your first year. You'd have to have some type of quantitative time that would be, actually, I had thought maybe that was going to, they were going to ask for five. Three years, to me, is just them proving their point that they've saved us the money.
I got a question for you. Okay, if we, if they're not providing software, then what are they providing that we couldn't hire a person, an additional person to do? I mean, what do they bring? Is it more horsepower, more manpower, looking at what you're trying to look at by yourself?
Right. I, I have written down a couple of things that, that, uh, I have read through their presentations before, and, and I agree to this. They will bring additional training to myself, as well as staff members. Uh, they'll bring a proven set of guidelines and procedures that they have used for the last 17 years that worked for them. And, uh, they will also provide, uh, some technical support. They have a lot of technical guys on their staff that can help us with our HVAC systems and lighting systems, and basically tell us where we need to concentrate our efforts on. And, uh, and just in general, they are going to help us sell the program, sell the program to staff members and to the public.
Well, realistically, you know, I, I feel like that, you know, you're talking about a total three-year, $465,000 total investment. Personally, just from what little bit I know, and knowing that we've got the, we've got the foundation set, Cliff, we've got you, we've had you, what, two years now?
Correct.
Two years. We've got the software, we've got you. Uh, and with the, this added boost, we'll probably, we, we can't make contracts on probability. I'm sure, you know, speculation and all that. But I feel like, though, that we'll probably recover this three-year cost expense, probably the first year and a half, at the very most, we'd probably recover it. And then it goes on and on and on and on. But to answer a, a concern that you had earlier, Ms. Furtenbaugh, about the windows and the chillers and all of that, that's the same thing with anything, you know, because, uh, as the country moves forward and Cabarrus County Schools moves forward, we're always looking at energy efficient. We're always looking at, or what was energy efficient 10 years ago, obviously is obsolete now. You put a new chiller in, you got something that's more efficient. You, 10 years ago, you bought an automobile, if you've got 25 miles to the gallon, you're doing good. But now you can buy cars with 50 and 60 miles to the gallon. And so obviously, there's a change in technology. And we're, uh, we're putting new things in that's going to save us money anyway. But those things too are going to get old. But these procedures that they're putting in is, it's a mindset. It's something that most people are not set to do, turning out the lights in the, in the rooms, turning off the things that don't need to be on whenever the day, school day is going on, particularly in the schools that have so much light from the outside coming in. There's no need in, you know, and we preach this stuff all the time, keep the lights turned out where there's light, that you don't need lights. And, but this is supposed to help us in more ways than just, uh, energy management. It's going to be a change in mindset as well, which will be an ongoing thing. So, you know, for myself, I'm only one, there's six of us here tonight, and as far as I'm concerned, I'm ready to move on. And Ms. Furtenbaugh or anyone else wants this to go to the action agenda, we can do that. Uh, I'm ready for the consent agenda myself. So where is everybody at?
Action, please.
All right, anybody else? Where's, where are you at, Mr. Fur?
Well... Mr. Schu, you sold me.
Good. Ms. Blackwell?
We're not voting tonight.
No, 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 we, we deciding where we're going to go with it.
I mean, I would have been fine for the consent agenda with the, um, changes that Ms. Furtenbaugh pointed out in the removing 2.5. And also, just, I, I don't think 2.1 needs to be excluded or changed, except for maybe just to take out the salary and benefits of the energy manager will be agreed upon. Just delete that sentence and the rest of it would be fine.
That's fine. Okay. All right.
Action's fine with me. I, I, there may be a couple of questions that come up, and I think that's the prudent way to go.
Okay, so that's what we'll do. We'll put it on the action agenda for the 14th, and hopefully we'll wrap it up then. Thank you, Mr. Meyer.
Thank you.
Okay, board members, looks like it's the 4.11. It's, looks like this is my item here. And this is where that it's the superintendent's recommendation that the board member training hours for submission to the North Carolina School Board Association be approved as presented. And as you all noticed, it's mostly for Carolyn. Carolyn has, uh, uh, training hours for the annual Head Start Conference in Raleigh, and also for the National School Board Conference in Boston, a total of like 27.75 hours. Do we have any questions, concerns about us submitting this to the North Carolina School Board Association, so she'll get credit?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, we do not need to submit, uh, National School Board Association. They go automatically. So that doesn't need to be sent by us. That would be a duplication. NSBA goes automatically, just like FRN does for me.
Okay. I, I wouldn't know because I've never been to a National School Board Conference, so I wouldn't know. I'll take it you've been, or that's just general knowledge. So, all right, any other comments, questions? All right, let's move this to the consent agenda with the exception of the NSBA, uh, credits. Uh, Ms. Monroe, do you have, uh, that? So all we'll do is the, uh, things that pertain to, uh, the North Carolina School Board Association.
Just the Head Start one?
Yeah, just the Head Start. Yeah, just those things that pertain to, uh, uh, so, all right, so we'll move that to the consent agenda, taking that off. Okay, ladies and gentlemen, we're down to the time for the board to convene in the closed session. We have a few items to discuss tonight, and so we're going to convene in closed session, pursue it to General Statute 143.318.11A6 to consider the qualifications, competence, performance, character, fitness, conditions of appointment or employee, or prospective public officer or employee, or to hear or investigate a complaint, charge, or grievance by or against an individual public officer or employee, and pursue it to General Statute 143-318.11A3 to consult with an attorney employed or retained by the public body in order to preserve the attorney-client privilege between the attorney and the public body, which privilege is hereby acknowledged. Do I have a motion that we convene in closed session?
So moved.
Motion in a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, ladies and gentlemen, we're finished with our meeting tonight. Like to say thank you all for attending and good night.